Good afternoon, everybody. This is the advertised time and place for the September 19th, 2024 Planning Board meeting. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good afternoon. We have no public hearings today, so we're going to go right into discussion items. And Heather, you're up, number one, with Project 58 Restaurant Conversion.
For the record, Heather Trochowski, planner for town, and if you have a representative for you, or the owner for the...
Thank you.
Come on up. And if you could just state your name for the record.
Tony Asta.
Tony Asta owner.
All right. So many of you are familiar with this property. It's on the corner of Harrison Avenue and Old Country Road. It's the former mattress firm building, the Northerly Building on the parcel. The applicant is proposing to convert that building, which is currently vacant, 5,233.8 square feet, into a restaurant with 56 seats, along with site improvements, including parking and paving, onsite drainage in the new parking area, a grease trap installation, and then updating the site lighting to be compliant with dark skies and landscaping. The subject parcel is located at 1199 Old Country Road in Riverhead, tax map number And the site is currently developed with two separate buildings. Again, the Northerly Building was formerly a retail building for mattress firm. The Southern Building is currently used as an office for the Riverhead Central School District. The subject parcel is within the Business Center zoning use district where restaurants are a permitted use. So in order to accommodate the number of seats, because the parking requirements, it's one per three seats for town code, the applicant is proposing to add seven new stalls on the southernmost portion of the property. Ideally, it's because the existing office building, based on the square footage, requires 25 stalls, and the restaurant, based on the seating, requires 19. When I was looking at the former mattress firm building, based on the parking calculations for retail, that would have required 20, so he's actually reducing the required number of stalls. But the site was underparked to begin with. They received a parking variance, I think, back in the 80s. Obviously, the uses have changed since then, so again, he's adding seven additional stalls to meet the parking requirements. I think he's in excess of one stall, based on what he's proposing. The proposed action is a Type II action pursuant to SECRA. It's the reuse of existing vacant commercial space with minor site improvements, including those parking stalls. In addition to the...
Heather?
Yes, go ahead.
On your ZVA stuff, there's a thing here that says we've got zoning board granted relief for 38 parking spaces instead of 57.
Yes, that was back in 1991. I apologize, I said 1980, but they received that, but the uses have changed since then. So, you know, with the new site plan application, they do need to provide the parking. I understand, you know, I think the Riverhead Central School District building was a medical office, which is a higher threshold, so that, I think that's why they received that parking variance. But, you know, because at restaurants, you know, with the seating, you want to make sure that you're providing enough parking for customers on top of the existing office building, and Mr. Asta is proposing that in the site plan. So no variances would be required with the proposed parking and change of use. I will note that the area of cross-access that we would require pursuant to town code, if reciprocal cross-access were to be filed on the Easterly property and that would be improved, he would lose three stalls. So a question I posed in my staff report is whether or not two stalls would be able to be relocated elsewhere. Again, he is in excess of one stall, so if he loses three with that cross-access, he would have to provide two to meet the parking requirements. So that's just something that I had brought up in my staff report. It's not being improved at this time, but again, we require cross-access between adjacent commercial properties, especially along Route 58. We want that interconnectivity between parcels so that people don't keep going back onto the main road. I did refer it over to DPW because they're proposing a new concrete curbing and sidewalk along the right-of-way on 58. I haven't received comments back to date, but when I do receive them, you know, obviously those would have to be incorporated, subject to any approvals or prior to issuance of building permits, they will need a highway work permit or corresponding approval from Suffolk County DPW. So just moving through the staff report, landscaping and buffer requirements, they are proposing evergreen trees are provided along the Westerly property boundary that's on Harrison Avenue to screen the parking lot. Suggestion that I would make, and this hasn't been to ARB yet, it's going next Wednesday, so any approvals would be subject to ARB review. I'm proposing some additional landscaping, or suggesting it rather, on the corner of the property. It says existing lawn next to the Northerly parking area. You know, that could be spruced up a little bit with some nice landscaping. ARB will be looking at the elevations. They're not proposing much in the way of facade improvements, I think painting the building and doing the awnings.
Get awnings, some lighting, and new stockroom.
Yeah, okay, but nothing major in the way of facade changes.
I'm happy to have an abandoned building reused, so don't take this throwing away. I'm just wondering if this meets the criteria for administrative approval. It seems a little ambitious. Does it meet the criteria?
And it's a Type II action pursuant to SECRA. It's an existing building, they're not proposing any additional square footage. I mean, if he wasn't adding that additional parking, they wouldn't actually need to come in for site plan, I mean, or if he wasn't making the facade changes. I mean, I am asking for a resolution without the need for a public hearing. If the board decides that you want to do a public hearing, we can table the resolution, and I will redo them. But yeah, in terms of what would be required for site plan, let's say he was proposing a lesser number of seats, and he didn't actually need those seven additional parking stalls, and maybe he was just putting up new signage on the building, site plan would not be required. He would need, obviously, fire marshal and building permits and the appropriate sign permits, subject to ARB approval.
We are removing the back portion of the building.
Yeah, that small mechanical room, they are taking that down. It's similar to the application that was reviewed for Riverhead Plaza, where it was the old Walmart building on the eastern side of the, or sorry, western side of the property, Ali's Discount Store, and the furniture store went in there. That was an administrative approval, and they did some parking improvements as well.
Is that building, that piece that's going to come down, is housing what, you said?
Oh, it's just literally two oil tanks.
Oh, in there?
Yeah, above here. You can't even get access from inside, you have to literally go outside. So it's all housing.
There's no doorway, like?
No, 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 yes.
Yeah, and I will note that the parking stalls, there are parking stalls along the back of that northern building, but there are no curb stops or bollards. Like, you can literally just...
Go through the building.
Go through the building if you chose to. So they are proposing some curb stops there, unless the board would rather see bollards, but again, some sort of way to block vehicles from impacting the building. The remainder of the site, it's all existing. The one-way width on the eastern side of the building to the property line, that's an existing condition. They are proposing to put, you know, one-way only, just to make the traffic flow a little bit better throughout the site. Obviously, you know, sewer district approval will be required. I know they had submitted plans to the sewer district because they are installed in a grease trap. Mike Freykel just needs a couple of things updated, and he'll reissue. Okay, so you're working on that already. They received a certificate from the Health Department with a few conditions, like food control unit.
Yeah, just some sneeze guards, just a couple of little things, but that was about it, really.
The restaurant?
Yeah, well, like, counter, you know, sneeze guards, where people can see the food.
Yeah, I listed all of that in my staff report, actually. Yeah, additionally, you know, final connection letter from the sewer district, splash guards, menu advisory, allergen statement, and sneeze guards, those are, that's what's listed on the certificate as approvals. There is a dumpster that's going to be relocated from the southerly parking lot to the, I guess I'll call it, the central parking area. They show it being fenced in. I just made a note in my staff report that they'll have to include a detail to show that it complies with the screening requirements. Town code chapter 245-8, so a stockade fence, no less than five feet, but no more than six feet in height, just to appropriately screen it.
I don't think we're wild about the wooden stockade, I think chain link with the privacy slats.
Or equivalent would be fine, so either wooden or chain link with the privacy slats.
Yeah, that's usually, we have...
So that detail will just need to be shown on revised plans. Obviously, the resolution that I have on for today is subject to quite a few conditions, including approval from the ARB. Again, they're going next week, so the design professional will provide any material samples that the ARB requires, and if they do ask for changes, those will have to be shown on revised plans prior to signature of the plans.
Is there any improved drainage in the new stalls?
So they are showing two drainage areas in that new parking area. Drew, the town engineer, did review that. I provided him with those details. The only thing that he asked for was a soil boring or a test pit to groundwater, just to check the depth to groundwater, to ensure two-foot separation from the bottom of those drainage areas to groundwater, and I think you're...
The test hole was just done yesterday.
Okay, so they're working on that. Yeah, other than that, you know, the water district, I referred it over to them. Obviously, key money will have to be assessed for the change of use. That will be taken care of, you know, prior to the issuance of, you know, approvals.
Yeah, they got that too, hydraulic test that's been sent.
Yeah, so any correspondence that I received throughout this review, I forwarded to Mr. Asta and his team, the design professionals, so that they can get it taken care of concurrently. Other than that, the fire marshal didn't have any comments on the proposed plan at this time. Obviously, the interior alterations to fit out the restaurant are going to be subject to not only building permits, but also fire marshal construction permits. If you're doing fixed extinguishing, anything like that, we'll go through the fire marshal's office.
Dark sky compliant?
Yeah, the lighting that they are proposing is all dark sky compliant, as far as the mounting height, temperature, no light trespass on to adjacent properties, so that'll be a nice upgrade to the site. Other than that, does the board have any questions?
Heather, I just have a couple of questions. Your plan is to set seven new parking spots to the south part of the property? And then you would still continue to use on the north side of the first masonry, the office building? Now, so that would be shared parking with the restaurant. How do you designate who parks where? Only because when you drive there now, there was 19 cars parked back there in that area from the office building.
Oh, you mean from the school?
From the school.
Um, I think it was like a first-come, first-serve kind of thing. I mean, they have only two signs that says for visitors that they have.
Right, but they would need a total of six, because you would be 19, and then 20, you need six of those spots designated just for that office.
I would put signs up saying designated for the school.
Right, right.
Okay.
Because you could put, no, you're going to be open for lunch?
Yes.
So you will, you know...
There'll be smoke a lot, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're gone by, like, usually 4:30, they're always pretty much gone.
Yeah, so I don't think it'll be an issue at night.
Not at night.
And it is, yeah, it is one parcel, so you're looking at, just like with a shopping center or another parcel with multiple buildings on it, you're looking at the site cumulatively in terms of the number of parking stalls, but I do understand, you know, that the Riverhead Central School District office, everybody parks in the central parking area.
As close to there as you can.
So, you know, even though someone, let's say there was no parking here, and they didn't want to park up front for the restaurant, they could realistically park in that southern portion, but it's not, you know, ideal for people who don't want to walk down the sidewalk.
And if you don't want to designate, what happens when the office people park there? All of them, like, like they're...
Well, I did discuss with one guy, John, there, he's like kind of in charge.
Right, right.
I said, once we do the extended parking, but that's kind of what designate, those areas specifically, you know, like the superintendent's there and so on, will do signs, so there'll always be in those spots. He says that's fine, you know, he, so just the other side, you're going to have kind of...
I'm just afraid you're going to end up with, hopefully, people may be parking on the sidewalk or whatever, it just, I don't know, it just, you're running two businesses with just the amount of parking that you need. Also, one other question, is that a fire exit on the exit door on the southeast corner, there's a door there, is that a fire exit? Heather, you see that?
So, right here?
On the back of the building, yes.
That I, we don't have, I think they provided floor plans, but they weren't detailed construction plans, so I'm not sure.
Because fire exits need a right-of-way out to a clearing area, you can't open a fire exit to a stall.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the distance requirements off the top of my head, and it's typically based on occupancy. I think that would be hashed out through the building and fire marshal permitting processes. You know, you have your front entry, which is the main entry, and then you also have the, that side door that leads directly to a concrete sidewalk.
If that's your second means of egress, that's fine.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm, again, I'm off the top of my head, I don't know how many would be required based on the size, distance, and occupancy load.
Yeah, that, that area will be, like, that back door, now that I see what you're talking about, that's where the kitchen, well, we get, you know, just some stuff coming in and out. So this will be the second egress for people sitting down in the restaurant park.
And if you get delivery, you know, if you have a parking area there and somebody's parking there, you know, do you get deliveries in that way? Somebody's got to move, or are you marking?
Well, they could always just roll it around from the side, either way, use that side door if that was an issue.
And how far would the concrete, you know, the bumpers be away from the building, Heather?
They didn't show that measurement on the site.
You know, like you're just saying that you're going to need them.
Yes, or that or bollards, again, something, some sort of vehicle impact protection.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm actually surprised that there was nothing there when mattress firm was open, but I guess they just were very busy, so. Yeah, in terms of the site plan itself, again, it's, a lot of them are existing conditions, it's an existing site improved with two buildings, it's sort of an anomaly because they're different uses, but, you know, the lighting is getting upgraded, he is in excess of one parking stall. The board doesn't have any other questions. There are a lot of things that will need to...
No, I did speak to you about the possibility of a public hearing, and I saw that, in thinking of it afterwards, I sort of think that we should have a public hearing. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think it should be done. But that's, I'm only...
Let's take a short poll.
Sure.
I'm opposed. Mr. Zunicki?
To have a public hearing?
Yeah.
You know, if Jill thinks it's not a bad idea to have a public hearing, but, you know, whatever.
Mr. Hogan?
To have a public hearing.
Okay, we've got three votes, public hearing.
Okay, so...
What is the substance of the public hearing?
What's that, Eric?
What is the substance of the public hearing going to be?
Project itself, just review.
It's essentially the reuse of an existing commercial building with constructing seven additional parking stalls.
I will note, like, we had the public hearing for Hudova, for the Friendly's building, because they were making significant site changes, including that drive-through, and that was also classified as an enlisted action. This is a Type II action. You know, I'll note that we didn't have public hearings for the Riverhead Plaza application that came in.
I think the issue here is parking, correct? Isn't that the biggest issue?
Well, my issue is that you had a mattress store, which you might have, you know, five people at a time. Now you have a restaurant, you're going to have a lot more people, you have 50, you know, 56 seats.
I don't see how a public hearing will change the amount of parking.
Yeah.
It's a reuse, and to me, the public hearing is a delay for the sake of delay. What will change if we have a public hearing? We can't add anything else, we can't move, subtract anything. I just don't see the wisdom in, if you have three votes, you have three votes.
Parking.
Parking conforms to the code also.
What's that?
The parking is actually in excess of one stall of what the code requires for that.
Well, I think I'm hearing that the majority wants to have a public hearing.
Okay, so I mean, we'll have to table today's resolution, and I didn't have a public hearing resolution prepared, so that would have to get voted on at the following meeting.
I'd be willing to take it off the floor tonight if you want to draft something up.
Council, is that a possibility?
If someone wants to move a resolution off the floor to schedule a public hearing, we can do that.
Does that work for you guys?
Yeah?
If we were to schedule it, I just have to figure out in terms of calendaring and getting legal notices submitted, because for site plans, it's a 10-day requirement. The Riverhead News Review only runs on Thursdays, we have to have notices in the week prior.
It would have to, it would have to be the October 17th meeting.
That's what I thought, because you're scheduling a public hearing today as well. So even if, so it would have to, yeah.
Which would be, it would be an afternoon, 3 o'clock meeting.
I mean, it would afford the applicant the opportunity to get to the ARB, and if they do have changes, substantial changes that need to be made, you can get that taken care of prior to the public hearing. And then all of the other things that I had noted in the resolution that was on for today can be taken care of as well.
Pretty much most of them are already addressed, I got the stuff for the, I already chopped off the mic, let the sewer district, I already got the hydraulic test, already got the whole board test done.
Just one other question, you have a large tree stump on the fence right on the east side.
Yeah, it's going to be removed.
That's, now, are you going to refence?
Well, the whole thing, once we do the grease trap, that whole area's going to be raining blacked out.
Okay.
And I mean, there's also a barbed wire along that fence line.
Along the fence, right.
I don't know who has the authority to take that off, but it's not very family-friendly in terms of a restaurant where you want people going to, so.
Yeah, I don't know who that belongs to, find out.
Is it on your property?
We don't know who it belongs to?
I'm not really sure.
Yeah, it's right on the property line.
And it literally goes down the whole thing?
Yes.
So I'm not really sure.
I don't know, I don't imagine that the planning board ever would have required barbed wire along a fence that divides two commercial properties, but, all right, so when we get to it, I guess we could table resolution 2024, I think it's 72 on the agenda, and then we could take off the floor the public hearing.
I'll move to table resolution.
Second.
Well, we'll do it when we get to that resolution. What's the next, the new resolution number then?
It would be 73.
73, okay, so resolution 2024-073 will be the resolution taken off the floor to schedule the public hearing for October 17th.
Okay.
Heather, one other question. On a proposed cross-easement there, but you're still counting those two parking areas?
So that, that was sort of a question, and Greg, Matt, and I were talking about this, you know, we're requiring people to do cross-access, obviously where it makes sense. The question is, is it's not being improved right now.
It's a wooded area in the back, yeah.
But do we automatically deduct those stalls? Do they get deducted at the time the cross-access is improved?
We're considering, we're considering working in some kind of amendment to allow, like, a credit for stalls where cross-access is required, you know?
If we're requiring the cross-access and they are already providing that parking, I mean, there's no other feasible site for the cross-access, that area makes the most sense. It's not really fair to push them into a variance situation when it's not being improved at this time, so.
Right, okay, same thing with, you know, with Houdova, it's the same thing, yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Good. All right, you two. Moving on to agenda item number two, 27 Waves LLC with Greg. Richard, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Justin, can we just zoom out on the camera, please? A little more, bring the whole, the whole page into focus. There you go, good, good.
Good afternoon, Richard Israel, Richmond Realty.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. So this is a site plan application seeking to develop the last remaining vacant property on Commerce Drive with a one-story, 8,775-square-foot medical office with related site improvements, including parking, drainage, lighting, and landscaping. This is a Type I action under our town code as it involves parking stalls in excess of 50. This is actually the first application that's going to benefit from our recently adopted policy of allowing staff to enable, enact the secret coordination process. So I sent out secret coordination to all involved agencies, so coordination is done, we've received comments from all those agencies back, so we now are in a position to, I do recommend assuming lead agency issuing a negative declaration, as there's no significant negative environmental impacts expected from proposed development. For the board's knowledge, the project site is identified as Suffolk County tax number 600-101-1-10.6. It is a vacant 1.09-acre parcel located on the west side of Commerce Drive, approximately 250 feet north of the intersection of 58 and Commerce Drive. It's identified also as lot number two of the Warsaw Park Major subdivision, which was approved by the planning board and filed with the Suffolk County Clerk in 1990. Surrounding areas, all commercial uses, including Panera Medical Offices to the north, and then the Harley-Davidson dealer to the east across Commerce Drive. So the proposed development will take access off of a new curb cut on the west side of Commerce Drive during peak period. I did note in my staff report on page three, if you see Figure 2, my only recommendation, while the 8,700-square-foot medical office is not in and of itself a significant traffic generator, I did notice that there's no real striping or identified lanes of travel as you come off of Commerce Drive onto 58. So you can see in Figure 2, you've got a lot of cars queuing up. I did refer this to the DPW, just as an interested agency, we did get some comments back, and I know Mr. Israel has had conversations with the DPW. It's my understanding that they're going to do some restriping at that intersection coming off of Commerce.
We've agreed to do the restriping. They came out, they want to have a turning lane so that a person can just turn and go west, and we'll have a queuing lane for people who want to go east. So they measured it up, it has the correct whiffs, we don't have to move curbs or anything else, and they were going to design it, we said we would implement it.
You're in the sewer district there, correct?
What?
You're in the sewer district there?
Where, I put in the sewers when they were going.
Yes, that is correct, and they do have a letter of, the plan was accepted by the revenge sewer district by email dated September 15th, they confirmed that, so they will be connected to the sewer.
Building on spec, or do you have a tenant?
It's currently on spec, because until we can build it, the tenants don't want to sign anything.
Yeah, I understand.
And it may, it may be a non-medical building, but we just don't know yet. We have some medical, for the first time in a long time, some non-medical tenants, all office.
I saw where the sewer connection is made, but where's the water coming?
So the plan here shows a sewer connection right here, and it shows a water connection on top of that. Proposed water service is towards the northern property line on the north side of the building. So to the point, if it was...
I'm sorry, where is it?
So there's a, it's along the northern property boundary, if you look on the, if you look on the screen, I'm pointing to it, it goes...
I can't see it.
Oh, all right, so water connection would be along the north side of the building.
Oh, okay, I got it. The building has a utility building attached to it, that's what the little thing... The building has a utility building attached to it, that's what the little thing is out, that's where the RPG valves will go, the electric meters, things like that.
So to Mr. Israel's point, they are planning the site for the highest and best-use medical office is one per 150. If they had a non-medical office, you know, if it was an accountant, architect, something like that, it only requires one per 200. So they're planning for the highest and best-use, if it's a other type of office aside from medical, professional medical office, requires less parking. Right now, the site does provide sixty parking stalls, where the code only requires fifty-nine, so they're parking compliant. I just did note that if it's a, our town code has outpatient medical facilities, require 10% of the total number of parking spaces to be handicapped. Based on the existing parking, they could, would be precluded from an outpatient medical facility.
I could take my one spot, turn it into patchwork, and then I have my sixth.
There you go. So again, similarly with cross-access here, this is the last vacant property in Commerce Drive, so it does sort of present the last opportunity to connect to Warner's Plaza, just to the west. There would be space to connect up in the northwest corner. That would really only benefit the people visiting Warner's Plaza. They could get through the site and go out to the light at Commerce and 58, rather than try to make a left directly under 58. So recommend putting that in a revised plan, just because it presents the last opportunity to do so. All the lighting complies with town code. Pole-mounted lights are fourteen feet above grade. Exterior facade lighting is ten feet above grade, and they're all 3,000-degree Kelvin, dark sky compliant. I do note that the plan does not provide sidewalks. I would recommend sidewalks being installed, although I do note that this entire subdivision, with the exception of the Harley dealership, does not have sidewalks. But again, create sidewalks, and if other sites come in for redevelopment, we can connect at that point. We did get comments back from the Riverhead Water District, including a water availability letter dated August 20th, 2024, subject to some conditions prior to installation and activation. We did get comments back from the town engineer. I referred them to the Fire Marshal, they had no comments on the plan. They were referred to the Riverhead Fire District, as well as the Highway Superintendent. I sent them to the Planning Commission on August 16th, I got no response, so their thirty-day time period has expired. Again, that, Mr. Israel had conversations with DPW, and the plans were referred to the ARB, and they reviewed them at their August 28th meeting. Just for the board's knowledge, we can see the elevations, pretty standard for what's in that medical park to begin with, and a lot of the other medical offices that we've seen along 58.
I noticed that you're gonna have an irrigation well for the-
That's to be determined. All the other buildings in here do not have irrigation wells, they have separate irrigation meters through public water. So they're turned off during the winter. They have RPG valves on them and the light. There isn't a lot of landscaping involved with here, and we just find that with public water, it's a lot easier because things don't turn brown. So for us, we gladly pay the additional money. I know that water is precious here, but it just keeps everything cleaner and neater because we do irrigate and try to keep our own-
What you just said about the, the other, the other sites having-
All our other sites have separate meters. Because we're sewered, we don't want to pay the sewer fee on the irrigation water, so we actually have meters in the street, RPG valves in the street for each building, and-
Does that, is that, would that satisfy the sewer, the Water District?
So they did, the Water District did include that in their water availability letter. Prior to the installation, they need hydraulic load calculations, including irrigation. They noted at that time that if no irrigation's gonna be proposed off public water, that they do provide a well. But if Mr. Israel's going to provide a separate meter, again, Water District had already reviewed and commented on that.
Right, on small properties, it just gets, you know, wells, by the time we're done, they're twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. So for the little amount of green that we have here, it's nominal.
What, is, is the depth to water a problem here? I see the-
We showed that, but this park in general has always had, I want to say, our groundwater is at ten or eight?
Uh, groundwater is about seven feet, 7.1 feet below grade.
You want, you can only use full footers.
I mean, this, this property used to be a wetland back in, like, the early, like, 50s, 60s.
This side was the drier side of it, but, Mr. Finkelstein, is my understanding, for the, the lake that was on the Harley-Davidson deal.
Yeah, I, I discovered that as I was going through the Warsaw Park subdivision and seeing some comments from the old Highway Superintendent.
Advantage pools that you need, you can only use-
Right, that's all been calculated by young and young, and, you know, this was the last piece in this subdivision. It took me 25 years to buy it, and now it is, so we're trying to make it, you know, blend in with the park and finish the park up.
All right, anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
All good?
Okay, very good. The only comment I have is, I prefer not to put in sidewalks, because most of the people do drive there, and we've never had an issue walking up the street. They don't exist, so.
We'll leave that up to staff.
Okay, comments and resolutions, I'll see too many papers. Gentlemen, let's go to resolutions, please. All right, I'll move resolution 2024-067, Zurovich McKenzie Lot Line Modification Extension. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote, I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution number 68, grants approval of lot line modification for Juan Diaz and Lakeside Trail, of course.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I move resolution number 69, Riverhead Townhome Site Plan Extension, resolution granting a 12-month extension on the final site plan approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, motion carries. I'll move resolution 2024-070 for Twenty Seven Waves for assuming lead agency issuing a negative deck, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 071, Twenty Seven LLC Site Plan Public Hearing. Resolution to schedule a public hearing on a preliminary site plan application seeking approval to construct a one-story, eighty-seven, seventy-five-square-feet medical office building.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Okay.
Good luck. Joe, you want to table this?
I think we did, you know?
No.
We didn't do a-
I mean, you would have to make a motion, call the resolution, then-
I'll move to table resolution number 72.
Second.
I moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And all abstain, four to one, 401, motion carries. Comments on all matters?
So we're gonna do resolution 2024-073, which will be Project 58 Restaurant Conversion. Resolution to schedule a public hearing for the site plan application of Project 58 Restaurant Conversion located at 1199 Old Country Road, Riverhead, within the Business Center, B.C. zoning use district. That public hearing will be October 17th at 3:00 PM.
Second.
He can't move it.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just stating what the resolution is.
He's stating the resolution.
I mean, you sounded really good, though.
Thank you, I've been practicing.
You want to move it, Ken?
I moved to the table.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Before we close, I just want to take this minute to thank the Terry Brothers Construction Company. They moved their driveway from the southern portion of their property to the northern part. It's gonna make a huge difference to the residents around there. It's on Roanoke Avenue, right by the new golf course. I think it's gonna make a big difference, and they did a great job. Kenny, I think you kind of helped spearhead that, so I want to thank everybody involved for that. Any correspondence, Steph?